Second roll calling.
Kathy.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there action?
No action.
I can never figure out why you go in except for a session and have nothing to say afterwards. It's disappointing. I can't. I don't know, you're not streaming anymore.
No.
Lloyd, how are ya?
I'm well, how are you?
Ask us after this. We want twenty new employees. Is that okay?
I'm gonna ask for eighteen, but that's really nice.
Okay. Two extra.
All right. My paperwork you already have on us.
We've got it all, I think.
There's, I have two new things.
Oh.
They're small.
Okay. You can get anything either. Thanks for the budget. If you don't have something we can get, they have two board members with us. You don't want to give them much. We need to cut it. Hey Lloyd, do you have something we could take coffee for? Cherry and bread?
Uh, I'd like some coffee.
I can have it, I'm not gonna be here.
Uh, this can be.
Oh, that's okay. Never seen it, Lloyd.
Okay. Morning.
Good morning.
So, I, I, I think we've kinda heard two conversations. The first one being, or one of them being, the IT budget for 2020. And the other one being PC replacements. Since we have people here for PC replacements, I thought we'd start there. And then move on to the IT budget, as I, as I suppose PC replacements are over the larger of the two issues at the moment. So those are the two documents that you already, you already have. You have a, according to kind of a PC replacement proposal. And then you have sort of a policy. I'm not gonna read through the whole document, I'm not good since you already have the document. But I will summarize all the points. Prior to what we're proposing now, the park was left up to departments to replace their own PCs on their own schedule. I know there was a major purchase that was approved by the commercials back in 2014. And that IT executed in 2014, 2015. To replace, I think slightly over four hundred machines across the county. This did not replace all the computers that existed in the county at the time. It's replaced four hundred PCs that were thought to be of critical need for replacement. Since that point, it has still been up to departments to turn the cycle for their PC replacements and to replace their PCs. Again, I don't know if there was anything else that was decided at that time. I'm choosing to focus on the future and come up with a system-wide policy. Agree to, fund it, so that we can handle PC replacements more succinctly in the future. And not run into a situation where again, we need to replace about the five hundred some machines. Because we're running out of time with our operating system. Currently, the master of the kind of machines went off Windows 7. Windows 7, after being told for several years by Microsoft that they would eventually discontinue it. They finally settled on a date of January fourteenth of next year. Since they tell on the date it's been consecutive quarters, we're going to assume the date is true. Even though it's the eighth time they've given us a date that they're gonna discontinue support. What we've determined is that, I'm on page two. We've determined that there are five hundred and eighty systems in the county. That are active systems. We've determined activism, they have logged into the PC at least once in the calendar year. Or that the PC is still unused in the county year through some detective work by my team. So that's what we're assuming to be an active machine. We do know that there are more than five hundred and eighty machines out there connected to the network, but only five hundred and eighty are active.
Five eighty or five fifty? It's one sixty plus four twenty, I think, right? Is that what you?
Yeah, so we have. So yeah, one sixty plus four twenty. So one hundred and sixty are, are, are PCs that we're looking to refurb and update. Four hundred and twenty we're looking to replace, brand new. Yes. Which equals the five eighty that are not Windows ten compatible at the moment. We do know that we have about a hundred fifty machines in the county that already have Windows ten on them, and that's, that's great. So we have two plans for replacement. We have solution A and we have solution B. Solution A is to replace all of those machines that are not Windows ten. That are active in the county. The major advantage of doing so is that it eliminates the risk of having Windows seven machines inside the county. And receiving viruses on them that we cannot fight because Microsoft will no longer support us to fight those viruses in the future. That's the major advantage of it. Of course, the major disadvantage of replacing five hundred and eighty machines all at the same time is it's a huge amount of labor involved. We would need, IT would need contractual services to help us to replace those machines. And it's also a major investment of funds in order to make that happen. As you'll see on the sheet, we're estimating two hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred for PC purchases. Eighty-two thousand five hundred for laptop purchases. Regardless of what plan we go with, we still need to purchase those five hundred and eighty licenses for Windows ten at thirty-seven thousand seven hundred. And again, if we do replace all of those PCs next year, the contractual services for that would be one hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars. For a total project cost next year of five sixty-six by a hundred.
I was glad I was sitting down when I wrote this.
I'm happy. I, I wrote it sitting down, so. That's plan A. It's not where we wanna be. It's not the ideal situation. It does fix a problem. Where we wanna be is at B. Eventually, we wanna be at solution B, which is a replacement cycle that replaces a hundred and thirty to a hundred and thirty PCs every single year. Continually on a five-year basis. That's eventually where we wanna get to. We can start that next year if we want to. We can say, we assume the risk of the Windows seven machines in the environment. Assuming that our antivirus will continue to support them for several years, we can assume that risk. And we can move forward replacing just a hundred and four, a hundred and fifty PCs per, you know, a hundred, three hundred and fifty PCs annually. Based on the schedule that's on that list there. In any replacement cycle, IT is prioritizing data that is the highest risk and the highest cost value if leaked. So the data that we're prioritizing are financial data from the auditor and treasurer's office. We prioritize sensitive law enforcement data over the emergency management and the sheriff department. That's our first subset that we would do next year if that's the way we went. And then, of course, we proceed on to the courts. The clerk of courts, prosecutor, public defender in 2021. All the court systems and some elements of job and family services in 2022. There aren't a whole lot of job and family services machines that we support, just those that connect to Venus. Then in 2023, adult probation, engineer building, tax map, water resources, physical infrastructure. And then 2024, quarter of elections, budget finance, commissioners, and basically the vast majority of the administrative departments that we have.
Is the board of elections down so far because we've already done?
Correct. Because they've already done their, otherwise they would have been at the top of the list. But since they, since they had the ability to replace their PCs on their own, we put them down the list. And that's naturally where they would fall based on their PC purchases last year and this year. These were all last year, right?
We purchased them in 2018 and implemented in 2019.
So they would actually be on that 2024 cycle?
Yep.
So again, we have two options. Again, option B, which is the replacement cycle. Next year, it would involve a purchase of a hundred nineteen PCs at a hundred one thousand one fifty. It would involve a purchase of fourteen laptops at fifteen thousand four hundred. We would still need to purchase Windows ten enterprise licenses. And since we'd be replacing them at the beginning of our contract cycle, we would be, we would be purchasing a six hundred and seventy-five count, which would cover the entire county. For the duration of the PC replacement cycle. If we only do them in, if we only purchase for the five eighty. We can, we can slow purchase this at thirty-seven thousand seven hundred for that, for that one, for that one time period. Because we wouldn't get into a replacement cycle for about three years. So we wouldn't have to add any more licenses until after that initial license term was up. But if we're gonna start a replacement cycle, it's best off to purchase all of the licenses for the replacement cycle upfront. Rather than waiting for Microsoft to raise their prices in the future.
You know Lloyd, obviously, the five sixty-six five is the ultimate goal. I mean, I guess I wanna know from you, how large is the risk? And I know you, you have no way of knowing exactly what's going to happen, but that kinda scares me.
So the risk in year one isn't severe. The, the risk in year one, Microsoft, Windows ten. Windows seven expires January fourteenth of next year. Our antivirus will cover Windows seven machines as far as we know next year. What we don't know is what happens in 2021 and 2022. We don't know how long it will take our antivirus to stop supporting Windows seven. Once Microsoft stops supporting Windows seven. We had Sopos before. Sopos continued supporting Windows XP long after XP was no longer supported by Microsoft. But that was because Windows Vista and Windows eight point one didn't take off. They were not very popular operating systems. XP was still the industry standard. And the federal government themselves had not rolled off of Windows XP. So all the antiviruses kept covering Windows XP. As far as where we're now, the federal government.
It's not the same.
It's not the same. The federal government has rolled out of Windows seven and has moved into Windows ten. So there's no incentive for our antivirus or firewall to continue to support them until the end of next year. So, next year's risk isn't too high, but the risk in 2021 is significantly higher.
And the thing is, although next year's risk isn't that high, we can't wait till the end of next year to start doing something.
Correct. We need, we need to, we really do need to start doing something right away. And this is not a problem replacing the five eighty that we came into magically this year or last year. It's one of those things that we would have had to be fully funded and executing a PC replacement program back in 2016, 2017. At least starting at that point. If we had, if we had been funded and started back then, replaced a hundred fifty machines a year, we wouldn't have the issue that we have now. And with any PC replacement cycle, it doesn't just go over five years and stops. You're talking an investment every single year for as long as you have PCs.
But that's the most economical way to do it.
Exactly. And it's, it's the most economical, it's the most predictive. It reduces greatly the variety of issues that we will see in the IT environment. We're seeing issues, I don't know how many are seeing issues now, but Microsoft office released a new update two months ago, and everybody's Outlook is crashing. Perhaps you sent some emails to Joanne in the past month, and you got the little message from Joanne that my computer is crashing, I can't access Outlook. Again, that's a symptom of tool, the computer using too new an operating, too newer product, and you run into conflicts. We can avoid a great many of those issues by replacing PCs on a regular cycle. And keep costs down and predictable.
Lloyd, would there be any way under solution A to, I, the contractual services, I assume is because the sheer amount of labor involved with onboarding so many machines?
Correct.
Is there any flexibility there?
We've knocked it down as much, so my initial labor on this, and Janet can attest to that.
We're sitting down. Talk to how long it takes to do one PC.
Yeah, so initially, this estimate was one million one hundred thousand.
Oh.
When I added the contractual labor off. And that was putting eight hours in per machine. Now, our people downstairs worked on a, worked on our cloning processes. We tried to knock everything down and squeeze things out. So we were able to squeeze that contractual services down to four hours a machine rather than eight hours a machine. It, it, it takes approximately three days to deploy a computer. You spend the first day unboxing, cloning, and then working on some of the post-approaching steps. You spend the second day talking with the department, making sure that they have all the software on it. And then that third day, for at least four to six hours, one of our technicians is in the field, working with the end user. Bringing files over, doing custom changes, stuff like that. So there's about a three-day process. We did squeeze as much as we could out of this.
How do you, how, how would you anticipate that would work? Would you be bringing, would that be all outside staff?
So the contractual services would be outside staff. We would need, we had considered doing an insurance or program as opposed to a contractual services program. The issue with, with insurance is that we're still required to supervise the insurance in full when we get returns in the office doing this kind of labor. With contractual services, we need a team who understands what they're doing and who may be able to find a way to do this more efficiently. Again, these are all estimates based on, on rates this year and based on this scope of work. When I go out to the field, assuming we approve this, if I go out to the field and get estimates on this, that number may come down. They may come down, they may say, we see the scope of work that you're trying to execute, we think we can execute this scope of work in less time than you would anticipate it would. And, and clearly, it's a bid. Clearly, we would have to bid out the scope of work at a hundred and sixty thousand. So we would probably get a lower, better bid. I tried to go with a higher number, just because, it's more of a not to receive kind of thing. I think based on the current labor rate of seven dollars an hour for computer technician, which is the standard in the local area anyway. At four hours, this is what I think it's gonna be.
So you don't anticipate this number going up?
I don't anticipate it going up. I, I, I can see the number going down, but I don't see the number going up from here.
So under the solution B, you have, don't have any, so you can handle this many years internally?
Correct. Internally, IT can handle approximately a hundred and thirty PCs on our own. That's taking one and a half people and putting them on a project exclusively for ten months. That's something that we're willing to do. But again, if I'm trying to put my entire team to replace five hundred and eighty PCs, I, that was, I think I calculated that to be seven people for a whole year. I think I wrote it down. Was it eight people for a whole year? Maybe I didn't write that one down. But I think I came up with seven or eight people working exclusively on that for an entire year, just to get that thing taken care of. That's the entirety of the IT department. So that's assuming that we do nothing else.
Nothing else for them.
But that for the whole year. With the PC replacement program, we would find a way to make one and a half people work on that. It also assumes, though, that there are other things that happen as, as a result. So, as part of the, as the replacement plan that I gave you all, one thing that we assume in the IT department, being able to handle a hundred and thirty PCs on our own a year. Is that we don't add one more PC to that list. So that in the event that we execute a PC replacement cycle, IT assumes that they can handle a hundred and thirty PCs on our own for that year. But if any additional PCs outside that cycle gets added to it. They would, if there was a true emergency for them, and there's a stipulation that plan for true emergency. They would have to pay for contractual services to add that PC in, in that timeline. That adding just one more would throw us out of our rhythm, or would throw them so far down the line. That it would not be worth it for them to replace a PC in that year, if it wasn't a emergency replacement. We're trying to get a better handle on how we're using our labor hours, so we don't run into a situation where we promise someone that we're going to do something in a specific time period and then have to get in a delay or cancel because we can't meet our obligations.
You know, I'm not real computer literate, and that's why maybe when you're purchasing these Windows ten enterprise licenses. That doesn't mean that you have Windows ten, or what does that mean?
So, what it allows us to do, Windows has changed their licensing scheme for Windows ten. It's the first time they've made this change. With Windows seven, I wouldn't have to worry about this, even with Windows eight, I wouldn't have to worry about this. With Windows ten, the fastest way to get a PC out is to take a, a, a basic computer. Add all the software on it that I, that I may have on it universally. So I'm adding Adobe Reader, or Java, or Office, or a PDF writer. I'm installing all the basic software that pretty much everybody in the county uses. Putting all that stuff in play, and then I'm cloning that machine to a hard drive. And then, when I'm taking the new PCs to the departments, I copy that image from this hard drive to all of those machines. And they're all immediately licensed, legally licensed for Windows ten. That's different from Windows seven, where I could buy a computer with Windows seven, and I could copy it up, I could image it, and that license would carry over. Microsoft no longer allows you to do that with Windows ten unless you buy specific licensing from them. That allows you to image a PC and copy that license to all of the new PCs. Yeah, it's a money grab on, on Microsoft, and they have made it near impossible. We have, I, I, I dedicated Mark to try to find a way to break through that. And we have not found a way to break through that.
I guess my confusion comes in, Lloyd, if we're buying the licenses for Windows ten, why does our antivirus have to support Windows seven? Am I asking that question correctly?
So our Windows, our, our antivirus already made it, we supports Windows seven, eight, and ten. That feature of our antivirus supporting Windows seven won't change. But when Windows seven is no longer supported by our antivirus, since we'll already be on Windows ten, it will be covered. Is that?
Under option B, not every machine will go to Windows ten.
Okay.
Even though, even though we have the licenses, because some of the machines are capable of running Windows ten.
That's where I'm misunderstanding, okay. So even though it's listed on here, they're not gonna necessarily have Windows ten.
Right. The idea Lloyd was saying to buy it now is that it's a cheaper price than presumably in three years when we do replace that machine.
Correct.
Since you're gonna own six hundred of them anyways, why not buy it now at the low price? Because it's not gonna, I mean, you know. You get all the new features of Windows ten regardless.
It looked like jailview worked. If you remember that work transferred a year and year, and we could look up the record and other places. It's the same philosophy, if that helps.
As if we were replacing all five eighty in one year, I wouldn't want to necessarily purchase.
Option A takes care of it all, and then I don't have to worry about what our antivirus software does, because we will all be on it.
Exactly.
Option B is still gonna leave machines on seven, even though we own the license because the machine itself can't run it.
Okay, got you, got you. Okay. Well, I know you need, need this answer quickly.
Well, yeah, it's whenever, yeah.
Not whenever, you need, you gotta know when you, seriously.
Yeah, I, it, it, it'll take us, again, probably three to four weeks to go out to bid for the contractual services for next year. Our, our plan even with proposal A was to, assuming proposal A is the one, is the proposal that you guys are going to commit to. We would then be going to bid for that in January of next year, since we're with the two thousand twenty labor rates. We'd go to bid for the contractual services at that point. We would also be locking in a price from Dell at that point, a price that we would lock in for the entire year. Just like this year, I locked in the price for a hundred and thirty PC replacements. We didn't quite hit that level, but we locked in the price that was good for the entire year. We don't buy them all at the same time, we buy them in chunks, so that the warranties.
But you have the price.
But we have the price locked in, exactly. So we would lock all those things in at the beginning of the year, when we're allowed to lock them in. And then, we don't plan on starting the program until February of next year. Because it would take about three or four weeks to get all the projects aligned and the first PCs delivered. But the anticipation would be the start in February of next year, and that would take us until November.
Now, if, if we do choose option A, how would that, purchasing so many per year, how would that pan out? Like this is for option B, correct?
Yeah, so in, in, in option A, if we end up purchasing five eighty, we would, we would still be purchasing PCs in boxes twenty-one. So that we don't, one, overwhelm the floor that we share with recomplaining, and two, we don't overwhelm our network resources. There's no need to purchase a hundred at a time and leave eighty sitting in the boxes while we work on just twenty of them.
I think what she's asking though is in 2021.
Right.
We will still need to buy some because option A does not replace every machine.
Correct.
And so in 2021, we'll still be replacing those machines that are still old.
That are still out there, yeah.
Were capable of running Windows ten.
Yeah. And there's about a hundred and fifty of those in the, in the entire county. And there's about a hundred and fifty of those in the entire county. And that would become year one of the replacement schedule. We would do that. And then, we could postpone year two, and then we could do a year three, and then continue on. One thing about, one thing about option A is we never want to come back to option A again. We never want to come back.
It's a one-time, yeah.
So what we might end up doing is replacing a three-year-old computer.
Yes.
But Lloyd will put that in his backup emergency pool. So that we'll start building up that pool. But then by the time we're five years out anyways, we're, we're back to replacing the ones we just bought last year, you know, next year, so to speak. So we might get away with one light year, but we're still gonna have PC replacements.
Correct.
Well, the bottom line is we need to get on a schedule, like you said, of every year.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Do you have anything else, Kathy? Thank you, Lloyd, for taking the information.
All right. And then, our budget request for IT is we don't just do PC replacements, but we'll be a lot of what we're doing. There'll be a lot of what we are doing, that's just a tidbit of the space. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. So, you have, I think you have a two, twenty twenty budget request of revision summary. So, like everybody else, I put in my, I put in my stuff into Venus back when we put in the tax budget. But since then, I've got some revisions to what I put into that. The Excel sheet that I gave you has the overall line item summary. And then, the, the document here has just a summary of some of the major projects. So, I think the Excel sheet is, it's not your. That's the line-by-line summary. So the new projects outside of PCs for next year, we're looking to purchase an email security server. We used to have an email security server before the county moved to three sixty-five, because we had an outside exchange server. We'd anticipate that three sixty-five would be better, preventing phishing, preventing malware, preventing viruses from coming through. And while they are fine at it, they're just not as good as we'd like them to be. I think we've all seen the phishing emails come through. We've all seen people get caught up in phishing before. What this server intends to do is intercept all the email coming into the county. It will analyze it for malware, for phishing, for viruses and whatnot. And it will release only approved emails out to the inboxes of all of the staff. So that you're not having to wade through a whole bunch of junk and spam and malware and phishing just to get to the emails that are up the crux of that. We do know that public records are still important, and on a very, very rare occasion, a server like this can stop a legitimate email from coming to you. So we would also set up quarantines for every individual person who has an email account. They would receive a quarantine email that has a list of those emails that are in their quarantine box. So they would have the option of reviewing their quarantine to find perhaps the email that got locked up. I think we've all seen, is it Franklin Township? It's got locked up several times in some phishing scams. And sometimes their emails have gone to junk because they've been locked up in phishing and malware so many times. That's a case where our, our filter might find them, it might say, oh, their email reputation is bad. It would block them. So you would have to check your quarantine to make sure you're getting emails from some of those entities that have gotten caught up in these things before. That project cost, the initial project cost is forty-eight thousand for next year. That covers three years of scanning our emails. And as I mentioned to Todd, three years from that purchase, we would spend another three to six thousand to update the definitions. Just like viruses, we would, we would spend three to six thousand to update the definitions for that server. And then, six years down the road, we'd replace the entire device. So network device that you could place on a six-year schedule, PCs on a five-year, servers on a six to seven. There's a whole, there's a whole line for all of that. So that's one project that we're looking for next year. Another thing that we're looking for next year is a system, an IT systems administrator. If you look at any IT environment, whether it's government, private sector, or another public entity. You'll see there are three common positions. There's an IT manager, who may also be a helpdesk manager. There's a systems administrator who manages all the servers, and then there's a net administrator who manages all the network. Currently, we have a systems administrator in John Grossell, who is also our network administrator, who is also our security admin. Industry standard says that there's three full-time jobs. Now, while I'm not asking the county to make those three full-time jobs, I'd like it to be at least two full-time jobs. I'd like to have a security admin as a full-time separate position, and a network security slash. And a network security slash, a network slash security administrator as one full-time job. What we did this year in, in hiring another IT help desk, took John away from the help desk. So before he was a network, system, security and help desk. So we took away one of the roles, which is great and that's helpful. Um, as a result, we've been able to reduce ticket times, uh, ticket completion times. We've been able to start to really build up our PC replacement program. Because Sam has experienced all of this. But what we really need is another IT specialist on the ground, which would take away, um, one of our current IT specialists and allow them to move up into a systems administrator role. I had thought about hiring a, a, a systems administrator outright. I just don't think that the county is willing to pay for that upfront. I'd rather us promote an IT specialist in that role, pay for training, let them train in our environment and say, no, our environment already. And then let that person take over that systems administrator role. Which is right now broken up between, well, John, really all of us do a piece of it, but John does the vast majority of it.
So Lloyd, this two eighty-nine, six twenty-three increase, how many people does that represent? Uh, the first, for data processing personnel, there's an increase in twenty twenty.
So that, that covers all those individuals, so that covers, um, you're looking at.
How many additional people we talked about?
One additional person.
Just one additional person?
Yes.
So this two eighty-nine has got raises in it also plus one additional person.
Yeah, so that, 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 um, yes, the, uh, on the Excel sheet that I've given you, the, um, yes, it includes.
Not this one, I did one in the packet.
The one, I would ignore the one in the packet, I would go with the new, that one there, that one's updated for everything. So, yeah, so, uh, full-time salaries and benefits on that one, I have a five twenty-six, five sixty-eight. That includes the one additional person with three percent raises for the staff.
And maybe one or two others that need to be hired or because of this steady promotion.
Yeah.
Well, for their job responsibility.
Yeah. For the, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we can't, and we gotta have overtime, we have to have overtime. I mean, the people that have been here so long and we gotta give them time off, time off, you know, it's hurting us. You know, like we got John, John can't work twenty-four hours a day. And thankful, we're thankful, don't forget to mention the Board of Elections and utilizing their grant. Otherwise, we'd be in worse shape.
Correct.
Not because they're here, you know, but because it's factual.
So, yeah, um, so the, so, yeah, the, um, the, the, the personnel does include that one additional person. Includes hiring one additional IT specialist at the minimum rate established by the Clemson Nelson study. Covering that three percent raise and, and I believe a dollar raise for each of, um, the network specialist and the, um, the new number, the John, the network specialist and an additional dollar for the systems specialist who will be moving from an IT role.
So that's the promotions we're talking about, okay.
Yeah, for the two promotions, correct. But, yeah, that's one of the other additional projects we're looking at. And then the small project, the really tiny insignificant project we're looking at is website security. We're trying to add security certificates to our servers. That's twelve hundred dollar cost, it's a pretty small, it's, it's, it's a pretty small time for buying to secure all of our websites. And then the additions, the things that were not in the budget last year that are in the budget this year, um, our servers. So our servers, all of our server warranties for the environment that was purchased in twenty fourteen, all of their contracts expire at the end of this year. So we're looking to renew the warranty on all of those servers next year and also for the year after that, so that.
That's in here, it's on the show.
That's in that, that's in that YouTube. Uh, we're also looking to renew it after next year. The Microsoft licensing project, um, we're looking at spending thirteen thousand five hundred to renewing our server licenses. And this is where the Board of Elections came in this year. The Board of Elections spent twenty-eight thousand this year to buy server licenses for the entire county. So again, when we purchased all our servers and PCs ironically back in twenty fourteen, we also bought licensing back in twenty fourteen. The light, the, um, licenses for our servers have already expired. And the operating system for our servers was, were already reaching the end, their end of life later next year. So Board of Elections purchased licensing to cover all of our servers, the upfront cost. All we have to do as accounting is pay thirteen thousand five hundred next year to renew those licenses for the next three years. So they've covered.
Right, and that was part of this, the SOS's cybersecurity directive, so the county itself was not compliant. So in order for us to be compliant, everybody had to, so that's why we, for, put in that position.
Okay.
Really helps with good cooperation between the other departments and we have it, and we wanna keep it.
Absolutely. And of course, I threw in the amount for, um, Courtview for next year. It's estimate based on, um, we assume that they'll raise or raise by two percent, which is in our contract.
Are they gonna keep Courtview?
They're keeping Courtview next year. The issue that we have with Courtview is that we're on a legacy product. So Evravon has Courtview, they've got J-Works and they've just released a product called Courtview three. So we're on their legacy product. And just like any legacy product that we work on, at some point, the company stops continuing support for the legacy product. Every time I talk to Courtview, they say, we have no plans at this time to discontinue support for our legacy product. Every person says the exact same lie, they've been well coached.
But you don't believe them, so.
At some point, that line will change to, we will discontinue support at this time. Although that hasn't happened yet, we're trying to prepare for the day that that does happen. We're, uh, I'm pursuing with Courtview estimates to bring the entire court system up to J-Works. Uh, we already have the estimate for the prosecutor, which you saw a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago. Uh, so we already did an assessment so we know how much money we kinda need to save to manage that. We assume it's gonna be a heavy cost, so we're trying to estimate early so we know about how heavy that cost is gonna be. And that we can also fit it in to an appropriate replacement cycle. It's not, with all the replacement types that we have for servers, for PCs, for network, they all require a lot of IT resources. One thing that we're trying to do is keep the staff levels fairly, fairly consistent by not overwhelming IT and putting too many products in in a particular year, software being one of those projects. And then for Munis next year, I put in the increased for Munis, also added some training for Munis. Uh, next year, we're going to have a new version of Munis. So we did one update this year, we'll get to another major update next year, which will completely change how everybody sees Munis. It's a complete overhaul.
Now, are we in a place now where we've gotten rid of all the Munis things that we weren't using? I know we were going through that process.
We're not at that place now, but one thing that the support contract includes for next year is that review from Munis to help us analyze what we are and are not using. Now, I know they mentioned years ago that that would be a free service. Well, they've apparently started to charge for that service. So that's something that we're asking from them for next year along with.
Since we've overpaid them so long though, shouldn't they take that into consideration?
It's possible, but how do we, again, I don't know how we overpay them just yet. We, they, they can find out now how much we are or not using currently, but I'm not sure if they can go back to historically and find out how much we were or not using.
Okay.
Were you here when we were gonna lose Munis that year? Because they were done supporting it and we had trouble getting the money and it cost us over a million dollars? Well, and then we would not have financial system, which is very, very, you had to upgrade some things that cost us over a million dollars.
I don't want us to get into that position.
Oh, no, I don't want to.
Possibly can.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of people thinks we have modems that we shouldn't have, but those people don't know how they intertwine.
Right. Oh, no, I don't want you to hear of any of that.
No, I know, I know, I know, just saying.
I don't understand, so the Munis cost alone is, is it expensive?
Yes, it is, uh, next year, we, we presume that that cost will be two forty-four, four seventy-five.
Where, where are we looking?
Oh, we're, we're at the second page of the, um, the budget document.
They were sold too, I don't know how people realize that.
Yeah, they were sold to Tyler.
Yeah, Tyler owns them now.
Yeah, that cost is two forty-four, four seventy-five. And that's why we're talking about modules that maybe we don't use and we could probably, like, a lot, like, we need their help to identify that for all of us.
And what is that paid for?
So that, so Munis pays for, so that's the financial system, uh, that pays, there's a, there's a.
All the financial system, the payroll and everything.
Yeah, financial payroll.
Which just lets us keep using it.
Yeah, it's just a support contract.
Cause we've been on other systems that you're. Cause that's like half the cost of buying all of the computers that we need, just for that one.
It is, you know, it's incredibly expensive. And it's, it makes sense because it comes from, so it comes from Tyler. Tyler is a, Tyler's a great company, they provide New World for, uh, the sheriff's department and they provide a lot of really great products. But they tend to be the most priced in the market, they tend to be fairly high up in that market because they're trying to be all things that can be to every community. They produce financial softwares, building packages, court softwares, um, jail software. No, and they produce software, they're trying to be the end-all, be-all.
So are they kinda monopoly of government?
They're trying to, and that's what they, that's what their whole business model is to buy up other, is to buy up other companies, incorporate their products and see if they can make their existing products better. It's, it's a good, it's been highly successful for them in the past.
It's a monopoly like AT&amp;G and others.
So, so what, so what we can do about that is next year when we, when we, um, if we go for this next year and we get that training program next year, they will help us assess what we're currently using Munis and what we're not using. And we find there are elements that we're not using Munis, there will be modules that we can drop off in the next year. And you pay for Munis in modules.
There's probably not gonna be a modest reduction of.
Okay, so.
It's not gonna be, it's not, it's not a cheap.
It's gonna be minimal if anything. So is this an annual cost?
We'll switch it somewhere else anyway.
Okay, so it's in your.
Yeah. Now, one thing that's really great about the Munis cost and why Munis is so much higher than say Courtview. So with Courtview, and we go to upgrade, so you, you got the quote from prosecutors on upgrading their Courtview to prosecute, that was a hundred eighty thousand dollars. The reason why that cost is so high is because their support only covers the services, it does not include upgrade fees. Munis covers support services and upgrade fees. So we did an upgrade this year for Munis, which costs us zero dollars. Next year, we're gonna do another upgrade for Munis, which will also cost us zero dollars. But that's why you pay the higher support cost so that your upgrades are ruled into your support. As opposed to you being presented with a hundred eighty thousand dollar bill once that surprises you and makes you think, well, why are we with this offer to begin with?
Like a package deal, sort of.
Exactly. It's just a different model for providing support.
Is there a competitor out there that is cheaper?
I, I can't say.
It's up to you to talk behind their competitors.
The conversion costs or.
Well, we never did get all the conversion costs from the old blast system on our payroll wave. Because it is incredible and it's too expensive.
And, and, and you can get an idea of that if you look at prosecutors.
More than just conversion.
So the prosecutor update was a hundred eighty thousand dollars for prosecute. If I'm not mistaken, forty thousand of that was just migrating their data from their existing system into the new database. If we did any conversion with Munis or anything else like that, again, you're talking, and with something like Munis, you cannot let go of any of that. That, that's all permanent record retention.
That's right.
So you have to move the whole data slot over. You have some flexibility with courts and, and the jail and others where they only have to hold on to certain records for seven years and cer, and, and the other records beyond seven, they usually put it to some permanent printout that they store in the file. So you're not moving as much data over, but with something like Munis, you have to bring everything over.
Okay.
Well, we've got, since two thousand four, we've got a lot of, you know, fiscal information in there, in payroll. Oh, no. I mean, we handle over thirteen hundred employees, you know, we handle over eight hundred million dollars in there. You know, just the magnitude, you know, it's as big as the Robocop.
And then, uh, the, the only, the, the last thing I have for you is not something I distributed because I, I call it a way too early estimate of our capital plan, of, of the capital plan for IT, it's not something I distributed because they did way too early numbers. But it's to give you an idea of how much we're looking for perpetually into capital planning. So we've figured out, uh, capital planning for storage servers, for network servers, for backup servers, for our switch environment and for our phone systems. And just to give you an idea of years and, and amounts. So we're anticipating obviously a computer refresh next year and only computer refresh. In twenty twenty-one, we're looking to replace our server environment. At that point, there will be seven years going on eight. And that total cost of that refresh as of right now is three hundred thousand dollars, that's all. I think beforehand it was a little bit more because we had to put in a full infrastructure. Now we're just replacing the hardware and pieces inside of the infrastructure. So that's three hundred thousand point twenty-one. And twenty twenty-two, we're looking to replace the switch environment across the network and also replace the phone systems. Now, you might be thinking, you just got a phone system like three years ago, right? When a Centrex phone system, support for a Centrex phone system comes from AT&amp;T. And they've been supporting Centric Systems for twenty-some years. When you're looking at voice over IP phone systems, you're talking software and hardware that is only supported by the manufacturer for maybe six to ten years, maybe if you're lucky. So Cisco, which provided the phone system over the prosecutor's office, they bought that in two thousand and eight. That was a top-of-the-line phone system. Cisco supported that until two thousand sixteen, they have not supported it for the last four years. The phone system from Mitel that we purchased, I assume, uh, this is the last year that we had the initial support for. And we have to continue to renew support, uh, I believe the contract expires, um, sorry, the contract expires for that next year and you have to renew support for another two years just to get to that day. So you're looking at twenty twenty-two being seven years out or five years out, I'm sorry, six years out from the initial purchase of that phone system. That's where we gotta look to replace it. The switches will be a hundred and twenty-five thousand, the phone systems, I'm not sure. The phone systems require a full audit of everything we're doing now, what's working, what's not working. And it's way too early to even think about estimating that since there are features and functions that will not be available, that aren't available now, that will be available then, that we aren't even using yet. That we may wanna consider, that may save us some money, save us some time. But that's a twenty twenty-two replacement.
That's gonna include the prosecutor's office and the Justice Center, which those two are significant replacements because their systems are so old, whereas this building hopefully maybe would be a little cheaper.
Cause our system's.
Still some money, but so, um, the prosecutor's replacement alone is a significant.
Is the prosecutor wanting a lot of this, cause he loves his phone.
Well, your decision, your decision's gonna be wait until some July when the system breaks and it has to be replaced or budgeted at any time. And say, we've gotta prepare for this kind of expense.
I think we need to look at the way the John family went into it, that's what I was just telling Lloyd.
Well, they got the same issue with the seven years you replaced.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the same thing.
You know all the answers, you gotta talk to them.
And, and that's why we're looking at twenty twenty-two, um, trying to prepare that, and again, we are trying to align it with, um, the sheriff, municipal court, county phone system as well and anybody else who's still connected to our network. There's a possibility that they, uh, moves up to the prosecutor's office. That we may have to purchase, because, because the prosecutor's office is on a system that was established in two thousand and eight. We have parts for them for every component that they have in their system minus one. And so there's a one, two percent chance that component goes down, and if that one component goes down, there goes the whole system. It's the only component that we cannot get support for anymore. But we have support for everything else that they have, so if they don't make any major changes, we're okay. Now, if for some reason there is a major disaster and something happens over there, there may be the ability to roll them onto our existing phone system temporarily until we, uh, have to buy them a separate system. Or we could begin the person that we county-wide phone system with them, just give them a smaller chunk of it and something that can be expanded upon when the other agencies really move over. But that's, again, a conversation hopefully in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And then in twenty twenty-five, um, we'd be replacing the security infrastructure, all the firewalls, all the latest security appliances that we have in the network that we replaced last year and this year. So those are, again, way too early estimates, but just to give you an idea. Just to give you an idea of where we're going for, when I have these a little bit more concrete, um, I'll give them to you. They were not ready for today, but when I have it a little bit more concrete, I'll give them to you so that at least you can have them in mind when you go through budgeting sessions next year and then wrap them hereafter.
So wifi, uh, is wifi dead? So the issues in this building producing wifi were that we could not, the department had, they were on the same floor to agree that they wanted wifi or not wifi in their areas. What we're doing now is we're taking the major estimates that we had last year and we're breaking them down into sections. So the first buildings that we're working on are the Ravetta Courthouse and the Hen courthouse. We have them scheduled to come in and do surveys in those two buildings the last week, the week of September thirtieth.
So we're gonna get new estimates. Yeah, so, so for the other buildings, so those cover the Ravetta courthouse, the Hen courthouse, um, we still have good. Um, we still have good estimates for the jail, and the jail is interested in doing Wi-Fi over there. So they're gonna be the next product that we roll through, um, uh, after we get to the courthouses. This is also one of those things that we're not, we're trying not to overextend IT resources.
Are those in twenty twenty, though? So do we need to add those to what you're requesting?
So they, they wanted to do a survey. So what, what, um, what the courts are doing this year is they're doing a survey on what their buildings can function, what they can handle. We're hoping that we'll have, um, a really early estimate of the number of APs, which is the bigger number for next year. We're hoping to have that shortly after we do the estimates. It's just take very long and produce the key map, so early October, we'll have the numbers.
So the intention is for twenty twenty?
Yes, the intention for them is for twenty twenty. For the jail, it's not.
I have a question. Is there any in your budget, any of the stuff that you're talking about for the IMLI cost for the Albert Bond?
Not for next year, no.
Well, next year, it's covered through twenty twenty.
Yeah. No, not yet.
All right, so just something to keep on your.
Yeah, it's something that won't, um, again, it'll be one of those way too early numbers. Yeah, well, uh, so the Albert Bond is something that the Secretary of State is providing, which is going to scan all the network traffic inside of our environment, report it out, and make sure, connect to an outside team who will look at it and try to identify, are there security vulnerabilities, are there risks? Are there active intruders? And if so, they notify us, they let us know what we can do to remediate our environment, and they take care of it. Since the Secretary of State's covering it till the end of next year, it might be, and they don't know if they can cover it beyond twenty twenty. It's something that we're estimating to continue ongoing maintenance on, uh, beyond that point, since it will be a very helpful service.
I guess thank you.
He did a good job, he worked hard.
Oh, I know. Thank you for doing your effort.
I'm scared of public, though, if I am.
I'm already scared. I've got a call that's coming in from the person in Columbus this morning.
You did a call?
I've heard a lot of, I think so. But I never heard that on the VOC.
No, I mean, I know what you're saying, yeah. Thanks, ladies.
Can we?
You do, Amy.
How about ten or fifteen minutes? Oh, I would love it, cause I, I need to take that call. Yeah, that's, that's good, cause I don't wanna rush the reception.
It's real soon, yeah.
Yeah.
Kathleen?
Yes, yes.
Is there action?
No action. I'll move to go back into executive session for the purpose of, uh, G one to consider the discipline of a public employee.
Our second rule calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, wages, compensation for one employee and discipline for a second.
So we'll do two separate executive sessions. So we'll, this is for G one, compensation of a public employee here.
Our second rule calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes.